Good evening and welcome to our business meeting of May 22, 2025. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to open it up for public comments on any of the listed agenda items. Seeing nobody, the treasures report for March 2025 is available in the business office. And then we're going to move to the consent agenda.
Resolved to approve consent agenda items two through eight as appears on the consent agenda portion of this agenda.
Second. Questions or comments?
The agenda includes CSE CPSE placements, amending the substitute listing, approving unpaid hours for various staff members, authorizing the superintendent of schools to enter into various agreements, one of which is the town use of the buses during the summer camp, health insurance agreement with the retiree, health and welfare with Lakeland, and a release and settlement agreement for a PPS student, approving entering into an agreement with BOSI's Risk Operations Center, approving two unpaid leave of absent requests, approving surplus items for sale, auction, or disposal, and approving budget transfers of over $25,000 during the period April 17 till May 20.
Any other questions or comments?
I just want to comment that the town is going to be paying us to use the buses, so that's actually revenue. Right?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? The resolution passes. Reports, students. Aiden, we're going to let you go first after much congratulations and we're glad to see you here.
Glad to be here. So last week or earlier this week, the IB and AP testing has finished up at the high school, so the students are officially checked out. Yesterday, the high school chorus concert was in the pack, so big congratulations to all those students, sounded great. Speaking of that, this coming Wednesday, May 28, is the high school band concert in the pack at seven o'clock. Tomorrow is the midpoint of the fourth quarter in the high school. It's crazy, it's almost over. June 4 is the senior award night in the pack at seven o'clock. And then today, we had a presentation from the sheriff's department about online safety, and that was given to all the students. That was a good presentation. And this is the seniors' last meeting, or my last meeting, because the next board meeting's on the night of prom, so I won't be here. And so, yeah, that's it.
Thank you. Oh, that makes me sad.
Congratulations on being so close to the end.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We'll miss you at prom.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, maybe if you sent us a picture in your tuxedo, we'll just beam you up on the screen so we can check out.
Yeah, Zoom meeting from the phone.
That's it. Well, I, you know, I would, I didn't realize that this was going to be your last meeting. Really? There's not another one in June? They're done?
One in June, the other one's after the school year. Or it's like section, it's like the last, second to last day of school.
So really, student reps are so important to us, and we are so grateful that you've been here and shared your thoughts and ideas. I know that you explain things to the rest of the student body, so you really were a representative from the board. And hopefully we'll get somebody just as good next year, Aiden. Thank you very much, even if your mother made you come tonight.
No, she didn't know there was a meeting. I had to tell her where I was going, but, you know. It was quite the experience being on the board, and it was something, you know, you know, I'm glad I had this opportunity and, you know, it was good being here. Thanks for welcoming me with such, you know, open arms.
Are you done with government service?
Yeah.
Drawing a line? I want no part of this.
Yep.
Actually, to me, this is, I don't know, this kind of service is exciting. So, but I know that it can be, there were times a couple of years ago when, if it was a board meeting night, I'd be like, oh, I don't want to go. So I know that how that can be, but not this year. Okay, Dr. Luft.
Thank you.
Did he steal all your thunder?
No, I got some other stuff. All right, good evening, everyone. So I want to begin by thanking the community and all those who came out to cast the ballot. So this Tuesday, the wee hours, actually this Wednesday, the early hours of Wednesday morning, about 12:30 a.m., we finished our counting of the ballots, and I'm happy to report that all three propositions on the ballot were passed. So the school budget passed by a vote of 1,200 to 67 to 963, the capital improvement project 1306 to 921, and the library budget 1301 to 916. Also want to congratulate both Jeanette Yetter and Sam Oliverio for being re-elected to the Board of Education. I guess it's a congratulations, right?
Yes.
Just making sure. So our, I guess our big takeaway was we saw a tremendous increase in the number of voters who came out, which was our goal all along. I think the district did a tremendous amount of work leading up to the budget. I wanted to thank our district facilities planning committee, our communications and finance subcommittees that really came together and gave a voice to the community and shared ideas in which we can further engage our community, because obviously, we want more and more people to come out and vote each time so that this important decision is made by a majority of our community and not a very small minority of our community. So we hope to continue to see a rise in poll numbers. Obviously, it's still too close for my comfort level, but I do think that I was happy to see many families coming out and voting for the first time, and I hope that trend continues as we move forward to future votes to come. I do want to recognize, many of us spoke about Ready, the 2025 Spring Musical Legally Blonde, and I had made a comment that they better receive some Metro nominations, and they did, in fact. So that performance received six Metro High School Theater Award nominations, including Outstanding Performance by Student Critic, as Peyton Ferriguzzi, Outstanding Acting Performance by a Female Identifying Performer, Haley Cron, Outstanding Performance of a Production Number, What You Want, Outstanding Achievement in Light Design, Noah Plaid, Outstanding Performance in a Cameo Female Identified Role, Vienna Totera, Outstanding Performance in a Featured Female Identified Role, Marissa Catatoro, as Brooke Wyndham. So the other two reps who are not here, both nominated for Metro, so congratulations to both of them. So we are looking forward to the actual award ceremony, which is scheduled for Monday, June 2, and I hope that some of our hard students' hard work is recognized at that event. So congratulations to everyone involved, and we look forward to seeing if we take home any of those awards. Many of our students also participated this past weekend, or the weekend of May 10, in the NISM, so Putnam Valley Students in Grades 3 through 12 participated in the 2025 Spring NISM Solo and Ensemble Festival. These students and their teachers have worked hard over the past several months to prepare voluntarily for a performance that will be assessed by adjudicators using a statewide rubric, and we want to congratulate and thank all of those students and teachers for their hard work. Our elementary school held its Read Aloud, as it does each year. It was very well attended. We had the opportunity to gather, actually, some second grade performers came and sang to all of the readers prior to going to the classrooms. That was great to see, and I know that everyone involved enjoyed having the opportunity to go visit some of our classrooms and read to some of our students. As Aiden had mentioned, our high school chorus concert was last evening. Ms. Palmerly, Mr. Mello, myself had the opportunity last evening to attend the Lower Hudson Council School Superintendent's Annual Valedictorian Saludatorium Dinner. We attended with both Naomi and Zachary, so we had a great time with that dinner. It features school districts throughout the Lower Hudson Valley, and all of their valedictorians, salutatorians were invited to attend, so that was a great event. Just a reminder for UPK, the lottery window remains open through May 30. The random drawing of a minimum of 32 seats will be livestreamed in the beginning of June, and then all those selected will have the opportunity to register with the school district prior to June 30 for a September 2025 start. And just as a reminder, the program will be housed in the modular classrooms behind the elementary school, and students must be four years of age by December 1, 2025, and reside within the Putnam Valley School District. Some of the other events that have happened, we had our science research symposium, which was always an amazing event, sophomores and juniors presenting their projects, and seniors receiving awards or being recognized by their underclassmen peers. They have a keynote speaker, so that was a fantastic celebration of these students' hard work over the past three years in many cases. I had the opportunity to attend the regional safety symposium at the Westchester County Center, lots of law enforcement, as well as national speakers coming together to talk about some of the dangers that our students face. It was eye-opening and certainly left with a wealth of information, some of which I wish I never had. I'm terrified for my own kids, but I guess knowledge is power when it comes to this stuff, so. They also, we also had our celebration of film, so our IB Film students, as well as some of our TV studio, and our, the infamous Dan Mahoney and Kat Schutz came together to put on a celebration of our students' hard work throughout the year around the area of film. Our athletic teams are currently in sectional play, so I wish them all the best of luck, and we'll certainly provide an update on how each of the season ends, probably at our next meeting. We'll know that information. Our eighth graders recently returned from their Washington, D.C. trip. I still remember very well my trip to Washington, D.C. as an eighth grader here in Putnam Valley. I really wanted to go for at least part of the trip this year. Unfortunately, my schedule did not allow, but I'm going to make a more concerted effort next year to join them for at least part of the trip and share that experience with our students. The feedback was extremely positive, and I thank all the teachers who volunteered to go down there for three days, leave their families, take a very long bus ride with lots of eighth graders. That part I'll probably skip when I go, but I'm glad everybody had a great time, and everybody came back safe and sound to us, so we're looking forward to next year. We held our first-ever community planting event at the elementary school. I have to say, the turnout was outstanding. Families and their children coming together, many of our teachers were there helping organize and direct, and our elementary school is now beautifully decorated with flowers, both in pots along the stairs, as well as throughout the mulch in the front of the building. We even have a few trees that we'll see how tall they grow over future years. And the calendar change is a reminder that tomorrow will now be a closure, so that was a change that we made a couple of weeks ago. There will be no school in Putnam Valley for students and staff beginning tomorrow. Schools will reopen on Tuesday. And just the public service announcement, our code of conduct and district safety plan documents will be on our website, and we have a public hearing scheduled for June 26. So there's a 30-day notice. That information will be available on our website, and then we'll ask the board to accept those two documents on June 26. As Aiden had mentioned, we have lots of events upcoming. Our high school band concert is scheduled for Wednesday at 7:00 p.m., next Wednesday. Next Thursday is our fourth grade concert, again, 7:00 p.m. at the elementary school. Monday, June 2, fifth and sixth grade chorus. Tuesday, June 3, seventh and eighth grade chorus. Wednesday, June 4, is the middle school wellness and career fair. Wednesday, June 4 at 7:00 p.m. is our senior awards. It's a very boring time of year around here. Thursday, June 5 is the IB banquet. If you haven't set up out of your families, you probably should do that now. We'll be back in June. So there is something going on, June 2, June 3, June 4, June 4, June 5, and June 6. It's a slightly busy week, but don't worry, the following week, there's something on the 9th, 10th, 11th. Please, any plans you have, dentist appointments or anything like that, 12 seems to be open right now, because the 13th is the kindergarten show, and then we get into the end of June. So lots to look forward to in a very busy time of year.
Do we know when the elementary field day is going to be with the bubble bus?
Crystal, do we know when the elementary school field day is going to be with the bubble bus?
I confirmed for Sam that the bubble bus will be at field day. I do not, right now, remember off the top of my head when field day is. All I know is that my daughter is tasked with wearing a blue shirt. Jackie, do you know?
June 20.
June 20, which is the same day as graduation, Sam. Right? So that is the same day, so.
But at the same time?
No, the bubble bus has to go home.
I was going to say.
The bubble bus has to go home, it's not allowed to stay.
No, the field day is during the day.
Field day is during the day. Graduation, evening. And then we have the graduation at night.
Okay, let me put that down right now. Field day. And normally, what time?
And you can even get a popsicle, Sam.
What, what time does the field day start?
I have my sandwich, my bad. Sorry.
It usually starts, what, right after school, or?
No, during school.
During school and the field day.
It usually starts in the morning.
All day, or?
I can get back to you on the exact time.
I'll get you a full agenda.
Probably around 9:30 or so.
Could you do that?
I'll get you.
I want to know when the bubble bus is there.
I was just about to say, just tell them when the bus is coming.
Sam only wants to know when the bubble bus is coming.
You know what, I'll send a message to the owners, let you know what time they're contracted for.
That'd be great, thank you. Cool.
Okay.
That thing is mesmerizing.
You know, they do private parties too, Sam, if you're interested. Pull up to your house.
If you've never seen it, I mean, for those who wonder what the heck I'm talking about, it's this enormous wave and shower of different color than assorted bubbles. It's mesmerizing. Barbara and I stood in the middle of it last year, and we were just cascading by those bubbles. It was great.
So I'm going to come to field day just to get a picture of that while Stan is eating an ice cream sandwich, and I'll have one with him.
Nice.
It's going to be great.
Good. Thank you.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay.
For now. For now.
That's it, it was like 45 things.
Just don't make any plans for June.
Right. Okay, so we're going to move to new business. Item number one, please.
Resolved on recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Lauren De Rubus to a four-year probationary term as a special education teacher commencing on September 1, 2024, and terminating on August 31, 2028, in the tenure area of special education at the elementary school in Step 1, Masters of the PVFT Salary Schedule. Ms. De Rubus, all students with disabilities, all students with disabilities, B through 2 and 1 through 6, and childhood ed 1 through 6, initial certifications.
Second.
There you go.
This is a good track, I keep it moving.
Questions, questions or comments?
All right, no.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? The resolution passes. Number two, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Olivia Gaiso to a four-year probationary term as an elementary teacher commencing on September 1 of 2024 and terminating on August 31 of 2028, in the tenure area of elementary at the middle school on Step 1 MA of the PVFT Salary Schedule. Ms. Gaiso holds students with disabilities 1 through 6 and childhood ed 1 through 6 initial certifications.
Second.
Questions or comments?
I just want to point out that both Olivia and Lauren have been with us to the duration of the year. Each was hired as a one-year leave replacement. Those positions have become vacant, so we are now changing their appointment from a one-year leave replacement to a probationary appointment, back to their original start date in September.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? The resolution passes. Number three, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the resignation of ENL teacher Ariselli Kramer from the district effective June 27, 2025, as per document number 197/25.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? The resolution passes. Number four, please.
Resolved by the Board of Education to accept the final vote tally for the Budget Capital Project Board election and Town Library vote held on May 20, 2025 as follows. Proposition 1, the budget, yes. 1,267 votes, no vote, 963. The capital project, proposition number 2, yes votes, 1,306, no votes, 921. Proposition 3, Town of Putnam Valley Library, additional funding, yes. 1,301, no votes, 916. Board of Education candidates, Jeanette Yetter, 1392, Sam Oliverio, 1572, write-ins, 262.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? The resolution passes. Okay, I'm going to open it up to the public on, invited to speak on any topic.
Good evening, anyone. My name is Joe Ferraro, and I've got a few things. I want to thank all the poll workers that put in a very long day on Tuesday. I want to thank Maureen and Liz Broas, and Deanne, and a bunch of other folks that really worked really hard to get it done. It was, it was a long night, and I know there were some complaints about the process, and I know it's, every year's going to be a learning process to figure out how to move things faster. But, you know, sometimes results just take as long as they take. And also want to thank the voters for the vote on the library. I do want to say, on the bond, I'm a little disappointed that the retaining wall's not fixed yet. I almost knocked the piece over when I came in today. And yes, I want to reiterate, because there still seems to be some confusion, it was ice cream sandwiches, not popsicles, okay? Let's be very clear. And Sam, I'm going to bring in bubbles for you. It's going to happen, they'll be here. It's going to happen. You laugh, it's going to happen. And that's it.
I'm giving away a bubble maker.
And thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Thanks, Joe. Anybody else? Okay, we have two upcoming board meetings left in this year, June 12 then June 26.
So our June 12 meeting, we have two presentations scheduled, or hoping to have two presentations scheduled. One, Jackie will be facilitating a presentation on our K-12 Writing Continuum, and we're working with BOSI's to see if we can get someone from BOSI's to share about their upcoming CTE programs. And June 26 is our last meeting.
Nice.
No presentation at this time.
Yet. Okay, board member comments?
Real fast, I just want to thank Dr. Messera. I attended the chorus concert, and it was awesome. I mean, the kids, I remember right after COVID, he had maybe 10, 12 kids, the year when they finally stopped wearing the mask and everybody was in school, and I thought, oh my God, this poor program. But he has built it up to such a level, and it's not only him, it's Ms. Cron and the elementary school, all these teachers recruiting these, these young children into being such terrific musicians, just vocalists that are astounding. And Jerry did something, Dr. Messera did something that moved me very much. I had requested, and you recall, Look to the Rainbow, and he played that last night, and I was very moved by that, and they did a great job. If anybody's ever seen Finian's Rainbow, you know what I'm talking about. It's one of the most moving songs that any Broadway player's ever had, Look to the Rainbow. And they did a superb job. Thank you, Jerry.
Okay.
Hi, I just wanted to commend all of our students who came out to vote at the elementary school on voting day. Just so that the community knows, our teachers spend some time during this season to teach students about civic engagement, and the entire school gets a great appropriate lesson or two on the topic so that they understand the power of casting a ballot. And we had over 320 students vote, and I just think that's incredible.
That is incredible.
You know, more than half of the elementary school. They were excited to do it. Lots of parents shared that they, you know, they actually, you know, reminded the parents that they needed to vote, and it was just really great. It was a great turnout for the students. They also got to vote on the names of our chicks, and so.
Do we have any updates on what that is yet?
No? Okay. There were quite a few names, so it's going to take a little bit to be able to tally some of those. Some wonderful things and suggestions there. Chickie was a big one, so we'll see who wins, but it was really, really fantastic to see that many kids vote and just be excited about the process. And yes, ice cream sandwiches has taken over the elementary school, so we're excited to continue that, and I'd like to propose also, because we did get some requests, correct, Sasha?
Yes.
For a vote for the middle school next year. Some middle school students were pretty bummed out that they didn't get to vote in the elementary election, so.
That's a good idea.
We are going to talk to Dr. Luft about that, and perhaps Mr. McCarty, to see what that could look like. I also just want to thank Mrs. McCarty for organizing the planting day. It was just so fantastic to see that many families, and it looks beautiful. They did such a great job. Oh my gosh, it was wonderful. Wonderful day.
Crystal, are there going to be ice pops in case we have students that are lactose intolerant?
So that is a topic of conversation between myself and the PTA, because we did think about that.
That's a good point.
We did think about that. There are some students who are lactose intolerant or who have allergy to dairy, and so we will have another option for them. It's lactose-free, for sure.
The class parents also, a lot of the time, are asked to bring things, so the class parents typically have been asked to bring watermelon, a case of water, and I'm sure that fund will go towards ice pops.
Oh, and I wanted to share, we had an absentee ballot come in for a student who was not able to vote in our election on that day, and so the parent made their own absentee ballot and sent it in with their child.
That's great.
Fantastic.
Excellent.
Take it very seriously.
So in closing, I want to just take the opportunity to thank all those who sacrificed their lives in service to this country, and wish everyone a happy and safe Memorial Day weekend.
Thank you. Thank you.
Couple, I have two things. One, we drafted the letter and sent it to the town board, asking for more cooperation or more communication. So I was thinking that they have one meeting a month, a regular meeting, and if, if any board member can go and kind of sign up, just, just to be a presence, hear what they have to say, you can report to us if it's anything that has anything to do with the school, but just so that they know we're serious about trying to open those lines of communication. So if you go to the district web, the town website, June 18, July 16, and August 26 are the regular meetings. So if you could make any of them, if you just shoot me a text or an email.
Yep. That's good.
I'll put it out there so that everybody knows, if somebody knows that somebody else is going, they don't need to go, you know, just, anyway. The other thing is, when I was on the town website, it says, and I went to Calendar of Events, and it says, if you want to be part of the calendar of events, because the library's on it, other town groups are on it, if the school wanted to be on it, we should go to their website to webmaster@putnamvalley.gov and ask to be included. So that also might be a way of getting what's happening in the schools on the town website.
I love that, Barbara.
Because there were several groups that, you know, that have a link on that site, so I just, I was there and saw it.
The library has touched the COVID center, made a presentation to the board every minute.
Yep.
Okay.
Just so that's an update as to what's happening with the county.
Okay. Jeanette Yetter and I started a thank you note after the vote, well, actually, before the vote was over. But my question was, who to send it to? So I'm just going to read this, because if I don't, I won't remember somebody. But, so who to send it to? Who to send the thank you email to? "The over 2,000 voters who took the time to come out called their friends and expressed their feelings. We hope they will stay connected and share their ideas and questions throughout the year, and not just a yes or no on the budget. We're incredibly lucky to have a supportive group of people who worked tirelessly for months to produce a budget and capital project that focused on safety and learning of students, but always keeping Putnam Valley residents in mind. I'd like to thank the library board, who added signs around town encouraging people to vote for the children. Other residents offered to put up signs and volunteered their yards. The Putnam Valley Federation of Teachers sent out flyers that gave information and support for the heart of our community, which is our school. The Putnam Valley students who brought their parents to vote and plant, who called friends and encouraged them to support the programs that they use. The Facilities Committee, who spent many hours evaluating the original bond proposal, slimming it down, and figuring... slimming it down and figuring out how to get the information to voters. The CSEA and its members who reached out to friends and family to encourage them to vote. Dr. Chen, her district staff and administration, who answered FOELI requests and questions with grace and respect for the questions and the questioner. A special acknowledgement to Maureen Bellino and her voting staff for all the work to make the vote of, and voting a pleasurable experience. People left smiling. They were greeted and thanked, and they left smiling." And then there's Dr. Luft. "His vision for Putnam Valley schools and students and his dedication to seeing that vision reflected in everything he does is so clear. Not just the words, but truly, the child first and foremost, building a foundation for the future." And I misspelled foundation. So, "On behalf of the Putnam Valley Board of Education, we extend our sincere thanks for the tremendous work done to develop the district budget and all the efforts to reach out to the community and provide clear information throughout the process. We recognize the time, thought, and collaboration required to ensure that our schools are supported and our community is informed. The dedication of all of you to transparency and strategic planning is deeply valued and does not go unnoticed." Thank you. Okay. I'd like a motion to convene an anticipated executive session.
So move.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
There will be no business conducted after the executive session. Tonight.